Ladies and gentlemen, I will call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop Meeting for today, Tuesday, April 8th. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Rupert.
Here.
Thank you. We have one workshop on this evening's agenda that will be our workshop on the municipal court update. Judge Kurtz, I believe you start us with this item.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here to give you an update. It's our first annual update of the Arvada Municipal Court since I've been here. I want to take this opportunity to go over some of the celebrations wins that my team has had over the past couple of years, to talk to you about some of our ongoing projects and things that we're implementing, talk to you about some of our hurdles and obstacles that we're working through, and just give you a general overall update about where the municipal court stands here in 2025. Please don't hesitate to ask us questions. I've got several members of my team here today that I'm going to introduce to you. I'm seated in the middle in the front row is Abby Cook. She is my court administrator. And then I've got my two deputy court administrators, Vicky Wire on the left and Sarah Meyer on the right. And then behind them is Nicholas, who is our senior probation officer. He also oversees the One Small Step Program and helps run that program and runs our multidisciplinary team. They're here if you have any questions for them as well. So they can cover a lot more of the operations than I can. So to start off with, I just want to give you an overall overview of the municipal court, just for an understanding purpose of where we're grounded. We handle quality of life concerns in the community. We're often people's only contact with the criminal justice system, and we take that responsibility very seriously, that they have a good experience with the criminal justice system. Our most serious cases are state court's least serious cases, and so that gives us an opportunity to address local issues locally. We are big believers in that, that local issues should be handled locally. And my philosophy is that 99% of the people who come before me are really good people who've just made a poor choice. My job is to give them the tools and resources necessary to get them to a better place in life while ensuring community safety. The one caveat that I will give is sometimes we do see people who have made really horrific choices. A good example of that is the Boulder King Supers shooter was due in our court the very next day after that shooting. So we do have people who are very high-risk levels to the community. Thankfully, we were safe, and it's just an idea of, we see all types in our courtroom. I really want to start off with introducing my amazing team. I cannot sing their praises enough. We have the most incredible team. I'm so proud of all the hard work that they do. We have a challenging job. Our job is to run our court every single day. Most of my team gets in between 6:45 a.m. to make sure that we're ready for our 8:00 a.m. docket, and some stay until 6:30 p.m. That requires my team to work four-tenths, so we do have staggered schedules to make sure that our workload is covered. But we recently had, we do customer service surveys every single day for our court participants. And for March, I brought them to share with you that our customer service, we had, I think it was 24 out of the 31 survey results that we got ranked us as excellent or above. And some of the comments that we got, "Thank you for the respect and willingness to work with me." Judge was awesome and very understanding. Thank you for the first continuance. Everyone was great, including the security team. So our team's a bunch of rock stars. I'm super proud of the work that they do. Going into, and I want to talk first about our staff because, again, I am such a strong believer in how incredible they are. And just to briefly introduce you, again, our management team is on top. We've got myself, the court administrator, and the two deputy court administrators. We currently have four relief judges on staff. However, two of them are only current available to work. So two of them are out for medical concerns and are unavailable to substitute, which means that we're down to two relief judges. And that is a various precarious, very precarious position to be in, and I'm going to address that a little bit further on. We have two full-time probation officers and nine administrative court clerks. Again, they're all amazing people, and there's some photographs of our team. I do want to address the relief judges and the residency requirements tonight. I did submit a memo to you, I believe sometime last week, to address this. But just to give you some background information, when I started in 2021, there was a concern of prior overuse of relief judges. There was a concern that maybe the relief judges were used too frequently in our court. And one of the things I was tasked with is to keep an eye on it and to use our relief judges only when needed, to not overuse them. So this chart gives you some information about what our relief judges' usage has been from prior to me, starting in 2021, and then I've averaged about $50,000 per year since I started. I use relief judges for vacation illness, when I do legislative work, administrative work, city leadership team requirements, trainings, and meetings. So I really, really try to use them sparingly. And we've tried to modify our court schedule to accommodate a lot of these things. So our leadership team meetings have moved all to Monday mornings. So we modified our docket so that we don't have court on Monday mornings, so that I have the ability to attend them, and I don't have to get relief judge coverage for my attendance. So we've really tried to be careful not to overuse the relief judge usage in an effort to be really fiscally responsible to the city in how much that is done. With respect to the residency requirements, it is in-
Quickly, Mayor Portman.
I'm sorry, Judge Kurtz, interrupt you. Can you go back to the slide? I just want to make sure I understand the graph.
Yep.
So is this, yeah, can you just explain the graph to me?
Sure, absolutely. Yep. So in 2018, it was our previous judge, who was here, he started in 2021, and the city spent $101,000 from 202, I'm sorry, I'm horrible about saying money, approximately $101,000 in payment to relief judges for that year. Same thing with 2019. It was about $100,000 spent on relief judge uses that year. 2020 was odd because we were paused on having court for a period of time, and we didn't have a presiding municipal judge during that time period. So there was a lapse in time period around 2020 through January 2021 where we did not have a presiding judge, and our relief judges were actually covering court. And then I started January 2021, and our relief judge usage, as you can see, is almost half of what it used to be from the prior judge.
Great. No, I appreciate that. That makes sense. I was, I was thinking more of, are we just paying them less? What's going on?
No.
No, I understand. Thank you.
And we actually did increase their wages. Previously, I believe we were paying them $90 per hour, and we just increased it to $100 per hour to be more consistent and in line with municipalities in the Denver metro area. Part of that I did because I'm trying to attract and retain more relief judges. As I said, having only two is a very precarious position to be in. So we increased our wage to be consistent with what other cities are paying.
All right. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Well, to give you more background, Mayor Portman, as the, the previous judge, the concern the council had was the judge was not in the courtroom as much, and so we didn't know how connected the judge was to the community. So we felt it was more important, so that was a big push. Just to give you some backdrop.
Please continue.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. And with respect to residency requirements, it is currently embedded in our city charter that both the presiding judge and all relief judges, associate judges, et cetera, are residents of the city of Arvada. And I'm now a resident of the city of Arvada. Some of you may know the backstory, the tortured backstory about my first day of work here. But I do think that there's a lot of benefits to having the residency requirement. You know, there's community connection, better understanding of local issues, increased public trust, ease of access. However, there's also significant drawbacks of residency requirement, including limited applicant pools. What I'll tell you is we've done two postings for a relief judge position over the past year, trying to solicit candidates to come be relief judges for us. And we just did it over the past month, and we had four applicants and only one's a resident of the city. So the other three are automatically excluded. And we are posting this in, you know, Colorado Bar Association, Jeffco Bar Association. We are posting it wide. It's just our applicant pool is very limited because you have to be a resident of the city. And this relief judge position, it's kind of a special group of people because you have to be somewhat quasi, either retired or working part-time in another capacity, to have the ability to come in as a substitute judge. So our applicant pool is limited. There's also reduced diversity perspective, potential perceived bias. An example of this is anytime someone comes in, I'm pretty active in the community. I'm on a lot of boards. I'm very involved in sports communities, so that, and I've got children who go to public schools in the community. This leads me to know a lot of people who come into our court. Anytime that happens, I'm ethically required to raise the conflict on the record. So for an example, I had an individual who I knew, a mom of someone who was on my son's football team. I bring both parties into the courtroom. I raise the conflict on the record, say, "I know this individual. Her son played football with my son." You know, that's the nature of my interactions. Both sides can ask for another judge to hear this because I have that conflict, or both sides can waive the conflict and allow me to hear it. It was a traffic case. They're generally standardized fines. Most of the time, people waive the conflict, right? So it's a waivable conflict. Sometimes it's not a waivable conflict. So if it's a personal friend of mine, that's not a waivable conflict. If it's someone that I have a business relationship with, I don't have a business, so that doesn't really happen. But let's say my husband, who's a business owner, has a business relationship. That's a non-waivable conflict. And so I would have to bring a relief judge in to hear that case. So, and even if, like, say for the instance, the circumstance today, even though both parties waive the conflict, everyone else in the courtroom could be wondering, "Gosh, is this lady getting a lower fine because her son plays football with the judge's son?" There's always that question there. So while there is the idea on one side that you've got a great investment in the community, on the other side, it could be perceived as a bias when you do have those conflict situations. So it's just something to consider. Recruitment challenges is my biggest issue, and that's the biggest reason why I'm bringing this to the council's attention. It is a massive issue for me. It is, it is, I think we've done four or five recruitments for relief judges since I've been here, and I've only been able to bring in about three. And we had a lot of prior relief judges retire. And I'll talk a little bit about what they, what our staffing levels look like compared to other cities that don't have residency requirements.
Can I just interrupt you there for a question?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm not sure whether this is for you or for our city attorney, but I think our charter's specific on the presiding judge. But is the interpretation mean that that means a relief judge is, is exactly the same, or is it, is it just our abundance of caution interpretation that leads us to that, or is there a differentiation there?
I can pull up the language for you real quick. My recollection is that it just says "judge."
Right.
And that's why we've interpreted it to include relief judges as well. But I'll, I can pull up the language really quick.
And I can answer that. It actually does say "presiding judge and all associate judges."
Oh, it does.
It does. Yeah. So it, I don't think there's-
So we can't fix it with an interpretation?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So when we look at staffing levels and residency requirements, I polled all the cities that are as close in size, above us and below us. Fort Collins has one full-time judge, a half-time judge, eight relief judges, no residency requirement. Lakewood has two full-time judges, one three-quarter time judge, 14 relief judges. Thornton has one full-time judge, 14 relief judges. Lakewood-Thornton, they don't have a residency requirement. Arvada, right now, we've got one full-time judge and two relief judges. That's concerning to me. Westminster, two full-time judges, 14 relief judges. Greeley, one full-time judge, four relief judges. You'll note, they have a residency requirement. You have to live in the city. And I talked to the Greeley judge, and he's having the same issues. I can't find people who are eligible, who are qualified, who live in the city. And then Boulder, one full-time judge, one half-time judge, four relief judges. They have a residency requirement that you have to live in the county. So there is a strong correlation between a residency requirement and lower staffing level, especially when it comes to relief judges.
Let me follow, follow up that question. The, in these other municipalities or other that are, that are similar timed to us that have two full-time judges, for instance, do they, is their court staffing then less because of that? Because I can't imagine that there's, you know, if we're doing it with one, that you split that up amongst two, there's got to be some slack time there somewhere that's used for something.
I think we're just incredibly understaffed, and we're going to talk about that. Their probation levels are higher in terms of their probation resources. Their administrative staff is about the same or higher. Our caseloads are about the same. We're just, we run a very lean ship, and I appreciate that. And I, I'm a huge believer in fiscal responsibility, but at some point, the levy breaks. And I think my team is approaching levels of burnout, and it's something I have to take into consideration. I'll tell you right now, because I don't have relief judges, I don't have anyone who can help process the paperwork. I work every single weekend to do the paperwork I can't do during the week because I'm doing, I'm in court or in meetings. You know, and that's fine. I'm very lucky to be in the position that I am, but at a certain point, you know, it gets old.
Councilmember Rupert, did you?
I'm wondering what your thoughts are on the middle ground where the presiding judge is a resident and the relief judges can be from elsewhere. Because I, frankly, I think there is something to be said for having you as a member of the community. And in all candor, there are lots of small communities around the state and around the country that have a presiding judge that knows everybody in the town. That's sort of the way it has been. And just knowing someone isn't in and of itself a conflict.
Right.
But you mentioned some examples that really are conflicts.
Right. I think it depends on how active the presiding judge is in the, in the community. For me, I have a conflict at least once a day, where I have to bring all parties in, address the conflict on the record. But it's because I'm very active in the community, and I believe in that. And I think that's a good thing. But it's a balance. What I will tell you, in the state of Colorado, there's only five cities that have residency requirements. The other 217 municipalities do not. So we're in the, in the great minority in this position. I, obviously, I don't mind it. I live here, and I love this community. But someday I will leave, and I can tell you that you've still got the same issues of attracting, or attracting a diverse pool and a well-established group of qualified candidates. There's going to be only so many qualified candidates who will meet the necessary requirements for this job.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. All right. Still on the topic of staffing, one of the things that we did recently within the past year is the addition of the second deputy court administrator. So prior to this past year, we had our court administrator, one deputy court administrator, and there was a division of duties. The court administrator primarily oversaw the operations. The deputy court administrator primarily oversaw staff, training, development, what have you. We have been trying for the past several years to get our court into a paperless court process with no outside help. And so Ms. Cook has been doing, has been working that paperless court process. She's basically had become a software developer and IT specialist to convert our paper-based file system into a paperless court system. So because she's been doing that, we pushed her duties down and divided up the deputy court administrator roles. So you can see Ms. Wire covers what I'd say is more financial, more administrative, more operational duties, whereas Ms. Meyer really does the staff supervision, staff training, and development duties. It's a beautiful separation of duties. We mirrored after several other municipalities who have that kind of bifurcated structure of the deputy court administrators, and it's working out really amazing. What this has allowed us to do is, one, in addition to Ms. Cook pushing our paperless court process forward, but it's also really allowed us to dive deep in our staff training, supervision, and development. We just did not have the ability to do that to the extent that we should have in the past. And so this addition of the second deputy court administrator's really allowed us to do that, which has been really lovely. Some of the additional things, we now have a four-person management team. There's been a lot of benefits, you know, greater productivity, enhanced training, and we, most importantly, have the ability to support our team in a way that they need to be successful. So that's been a really great movement forward for our team, for our entire team. Some of the projects that our second deputy court administrator has done, and these are some of the pictures of the projects, she works on all of our annual reviews. She helps every single one of our staff members develop their safety plans. She does, she works on the OSS court administration. She worked the juvenile docket process. Our staff members rotate desks every six months so that they have the ability to work every step of the process. This is our cross-training and the way our cross-training processes work. So if one person's out, someone else is able to step in and cover their duties. This is critical for us at this time because we have had three team members out. We're a team of 15, and over the past year, we've had three team members out on intermittent extended care leave. What that means for us is on any given day, I can have two to three employees call out sick without any notice. Intermittent means, you know, any, any given moment, they can call out that day and say, "I'm going to be late," or "I won't come in at all." And the rest of our team, and this is 20% of our staff, has to fill in those duties. And we don't have the ability to push off work and say, "Oh, that can be done next week." Court has to be run every single day of the week. And when you have 20% of your staff missing on any given day, it's a real problem for the remainder of the team to fill in. It's, it's been very stressful on the rest of the team who have had to fill in and fill those roles. And so, again, having that second deputy court administrator to train, to cross-train, and to help fill in where needed has been really, really necessary and critical. Questions? We've also had the capacity to do more extensive coaching and mentoring, team building, and really make sure that our team's developing that growth mindset that we believe in and that we believe is really important, not only as city team members, but also just as a team within ourselves. Our probation department. Still talking about staffing, we have two incredible probation officers. Mr. Lurs is one of our senior probation officers, and then we have Emily Pine. Ms. Pine primarily supervises our juvenile defendants. Over, since she's been here, she's supervised 184 juveniles and eight adults. She coordinates with treatment providers and schools. She does pre-screening assessments for all of our juveniles. So when juveniles come into court, the vast majority of them do about a five-to-10-minute pre-screen. This allows us to divert the juveniles who do not need to be involved in the juvenile justice system out of the juvenile justice system as quickly as possible. It's kind of like a, it's sometimes considered a pre-plea diversion. And, or those kids who have a higher risk, higher need can then be diverted into more of a probation-type supervision. It's a very quick risk assessment to determine risks and needs for juveniles. And then for those who are at a much higher level of risk and need, they do pre-sentence investigations. She completed 44 in 2024. Those pre-sentence investigations are usually a two-hour meeting with defendant, followed by about an eight-page report. That report comes to me, and it helps guide my sentencing, so that we're making sure we're employing the right interventions for those defendants. And again, we generally only do pre-sentence investigation reports on the highest-risk, highest-need individuals that we see in our court. Mr. Lurs primarily supervises our adults and some juveniles. He also is a One Small Step coordinator. He also does pre-screening for the juveniles. He does pre-sentence investigations. And he also does a lot of our data and statistic maintenance for both probation and the One Small Step court. In terms of partnerships, our probation department has done an incredible job forming partnerships in the community, including our school resource officers, other municipal court probation officers, Jeffco Schools, community service organizations, and treatment providers. So they've really gone out into the community to make sure that we're developing these partnerships to best support all of our defendants, both juvenile and adults.
I had a, just a quick question. On the school resource officer slide, I don't see Arvada High's logo. Is that just because it's not there and it's just a gap, or do we not have a program with Arvada High?
It's the fourth one.
Oh, but they're the Bulldogs. That's not a Bulldog.
We might have missed that.
Okay.
But we partner with them.
Okay. That's great. But, so we see, we meet with our school resource officers once every couple of months, myself, the probation officers, and we do check-ins. Most recently, we had a very deep discussion about their strong preference to file cases into the municipal court rather than state court, because they feel better about how the appropriate interventions that we're employing in municipal court rather than what they're seeing in state court. Juvenile probation supervision, currently, we have 77 juveniles actively supervised on probation. With juvenile supervision, you're really more focusing on the family as a unit. Success of probation is determined about family involvement. It's a big factor in success. We focus on using intervention tools. Part of that is taking responsibility. My motto in juvenile court is "Own it, fix it, forget it." Own it. Take responsibility for what you did. Fix it. Do what you need to do to fix it, whether that means taking a class, doing community service work, doing treatments, what have you, and then forget it. This action does not define who you are. It's really important to me that juveniles hear that, because I don't want them to walk away from the process thinking that they're a bad person. And I tell them, "We all made mistakes. We all make big mistakes. We all make small mistakes. But this doesn't define who you are." And that's really important for me, that juveniles get that message. Looking toward the future, we're looking at creating mentorship programs and having our juveniles get more involved with pro-social activities. I always ask juveniles in front of me, "Tell me what you do outside of school. Are you involved in sports, activities, clubs? Do you work?" That, to me, is really important. And I think there's a lot of really good life lessons and engagement in some form of pro-social activity. So we talk a lot about that. With adult supervision, we currently have 23 people actively supervised. With adult supervision, it's really more focusing on the individual rather than the family unit. Success of probation is determined about, determined by internal motivation to change and seeking out of resources. They need more time and support to change habits. We have more swift compliance for non, or we have more swift consequences for noncompliance for adults. And there's a large number of programs that can help our adult probation defendants. We focus more on behavioral change through access to treatment, cognitive restructuring, and sober living. We do have a lot of people who have either mental health or substance use disorder concerns, so a lot of that is referrals to treatment. With our growing probation department, our current supervision caseload for adults is 61 to 1. So a one probation officer supervises 61 individuals. Our juveniles is 56 to 1. The national recommended average is, for adult supervision, for an intense-risk caseload, it's 20 to 1. For moderate risk is 50 to 1. For juvenile supervision, intense risk is 15 to 1. Moderate risk is 35 to 1. So their caseloads are too high. When you look at municipalities of a similar size with their probation resources, this is going back to what we talked about previously, Westminster has three full-time probation officers. They only supervise adults, and they have a caseload of 46 to 1. Again, our caseload for adults is, if I can go back one step, 61 to 1. So theirs is much lower. And then Lakewood has eight full-time probation officers with a caseload of 25 to 1. They supervise both adults and juveniles. That's their average between adults and juveniles. The benefit of a smaller caseload, I think, is pretty obvious. Reduced risk to the community, more effective supervision, larger access to resources, personalized rehabilitation, and probation is much more cost-efficient than incarceration.
Councilmember Marriott.
So help me understand something a little bit here. So we, for years, decades, we didn't have probation in the municipal court at all. And the, the council even had a goal of, about juvenile offenses. So I can understand trying to apply some tools to juvenile offenses. But, you know, on one hand, you say, "Well, our caseloads are too high." What is getting referred to probation that in the past wasn't referred to probation? And are we making all the right decisions there? You know, in other words, one way to fix it is you say, "Well, we just need more people, and we can break down that caseload." The other thing you can do is say, "Well, this offense doesn't really warrant probation," or "This is municipal court. This is the lowest level of court. We shouldn't be doing probation for that." I'm sure there's some things we need to do probation for. But is there some best practice, some decisions that can be made to reduce those caseloads without adding extra people? Or is it only just, we only just have to add extra people?
So what we've done is really refine and enhance our probation supervision. I agree with you. When I started, we had one probation officer, and he wasn't supervising anyone. Again, it was in the middle of COVID, but he was running our virtual court. He was acting as an IT director. He wasn't supervising anyone. But what we've done is we've implemented risk assessments. That was never done in the past. And when you implement a risk assessment, you're making sure that the appropriate levels are employed at the, in the appropriate way. So if you've got a low-risk, low-need defendant, you're going to divert that person out of the criminal justice system as quickly as possible, maybe have them do community service work in a class. And a lot of our cases result in that. When we talk about, we had, and I'll get to case statistics in a moment, but in 2024, I believe we had about 7,500 cases come through the municipal court, and, you know, 61 of them are going through probation. That tells you, we really are very finely tuning, only employing probation supervision for those who are high-risk, high-need. What I will also tell you is, if you've got a police department who has a preference for filing juveniles into the municipal court because they don't like how the state court is handling them, you're going to get kids with repeat violations. Those kids aren't appropriate for take a class and move on with your life. Those kids need a higher level of intervention, which oftentimes results in probation supervision. So that we are applying appropriate levels of intervention, treatment, check-ins, what have you, so that we're ensuring community safety. What I would submit to you is, in the past, we weren't doing it right. We weren't applying the appropriate levels of intervention. We weren't doing risk assessments. We weren't doing the pre-screening, nor were we doing pre-sentence investigations. We weren't doing either. And so we were just kind of shooting from the hip on what we thought the appropriate intervention was. And oftentimes, it was a one-size-fits-all approach, and that's never appropriate. That is not best practice in any part of the criminal justice system under any respect. The appropriate practice is, and best practice is- The appropriate practice is, and best practice is dictate that you're making a determination of risks and needs, most specifically for juveniles, but also for adults, to make sure that the appropriate interventions are employed to prevent future recidivism.
Okay. But, so it seems, before we were treating juveniles without probation, we were, you know, you were offering them whatever their, if they pled guilty, whatever their fine or punishment or whatever it was, and, you know, go on with your life. And hopefully, we don't see again, but probably we will, or maybe we will. And the object is to try to customize what you're, what you're supposed to do so there's a better chance of you not seeing them again.
Right.
So I understand, I understand that. And I guess, I think what you mentioned was, the police department now maybe writes cases into the municipal court that previously they were not? Is that true?
Correct.
So, but the court is entirely funded by the taxpayers of Arvada. It's not, or we funded some other way for our court activities? In other words, we're saving the state money by those kids not ending up in state court? We're taking on the cost of it? So it seems beneficial to them and maybe not as beneficial to us, purely from a financial perspective?
From a financial perspective, maybe. But I would also submit to you that we're also ensuring a greater level of community safety by doing that.
Okay.
Because if, and I'll give you the perfect example. We've got one juvenile who we saw in our court who, by the age of 10, had probably 52 incident reports at school of assaults on other people, including teachers and fellow students. By the time she was 12, she had three cases pending in our court, all extremely assaultive behavior. She was a very high-risk, high, high-need child. We had our appropriation supervision. And we're employing really appropriate interventions, including school resource officers, MSD therapy, social workers, et cetera, to be involved. Unfortunately, she continued to commit crimes. When she went to the state level, they referred her to diversion. They treated her as a first-time offender. And this kid was so off-the-charts, high-risk, high-need. So of course, the school resource officers are going to look at it and saying, state's doing it wrong. I'd rather our case go, stay in municipal court. I agree, and may, we may be bearing the burden of that. But we're also ensuring community safety by making sure that, again, we're handling local issues locally. And we're ensuring that our kids are safe in school, and then our community's safe on the community.
Okay. So I guess I can understand it more for juveniles. What are the things that we put adults in our municipal court system on probation for? Like, what charges would I have to come through court to be placed on probation? Like, if I don't trim my trees at one of my rental properties soon enough, I don't get probation, I would imagine, right?
No, no, that's a code violation. You may get a fine.
You're right, okay.
Or a suspended fine.
So what gets you on probation as an adult?
Significant assaults, significant assaults, high-level thefts. So we see a lot of repeat theft violations down at Costco, Home Depot, the Ulta. And these are people who, when you read the police reports, have six or seven similar incidents in other cities throughout the state where they're committing large amounts of theft, like $500, $800 thefts, that they're specifically targeting Home Depot, or Ulta, or Costco, or Sam's Club, what have you. And short of a jail sentence, which could be appropriate at a certain, you know, at a certain level, probation's appropriate for that individual. That is a high-risk, high, high-need person who has significant criminogenic thinking that they need a much higher level of supervision in the community.
So what would we have done in the past? Would we have just sentenced them to jail?
No. In the past, what I've seen is that they've given a class, some community service work, and move on your way. And to me, that's not an appropriate level of intervention because that's not addressing the underlying criminogenic needs of that individual to get changed in a behavior.
Right, right. Well, and I guess I can, I see, I can see how, you know, what we're trying, what I'm trying to get my arms around here is cost to benefit here.
Sure.
So, you know, I can see, certainly there's a benefit to that person who gets maybe some treatment for bad behavior that they've never had in their lives, and they go on to have a better life. That's a good thing, and I think that's worth something. And, and, you know, the hope would be that the community gets that person no longer robbing Home Depot blind, or whatever, whatever it is, whatever crime they're doing. And so that would be a benefit to the community. But that comes with some cost. How successful is that? You know, in other words, if you take that person and we put them through this probation instead of putting them in jail, and they continue to rob Costco every time they walk through the door, you know, are we spending our money right there? Are we doing the right thing there? You know, when we've got an overload of cases, would that person? You know, how do you draw the line between that person going to jail, there's not much we can do with you other than punish you for what we've last caught you for?
Sure.
Versus applying kind of an expensive process to them in hopes? You know, do we, do we have any idea how successful we are?
I would say it's much more effective than giving them a class in community service, and it's certainly cheaper than incarcerating them. So it's kind of the middle line of cheaper than incarcerating and more successful than a class in some community service work. And again, it is reserved. I think, going back to our slide, I think we currently have 23 individuals out of 800-something adults were sentenced to probation. So it really is the highest-risk, highest-need defendants that we're reserving that probation supervision. Some of these individuals, and I'd have to defer to Mr. Lurs, are defendants who have kind of failed out of OSS but aren't quite ready for a full-on jail sentence. So they're in between OSS, they're not fully compliant. They need a higher level of supervision and case management than OSS could provide. And so I think we've got about five defendants who have kind of failed out of OSS, if you will, but they're not quite at the point where we would impose a jail sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, thank you, Judge Kurtz. I appreciate the explanation you just gave about the probationary work, especially with our juveniles. And so I appreciate what your perspective you're bringing to that. The slide, you flipped, can you go back to the slide you were on? And this is a, it was, maybe going the wrong way now.
Sorry.
There we go, that one.
There we go.
So I'm, do I have it correct, then? It struck me that Westminster is not doing juvenile probation. So does that mean they're sending their juveniles to the state, then?
They are.
That's what they're doing?
They are, yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
I have a quick follow-up. I think it was largely answered through Councilmember Marriott's questioning. But I just wanted you to help define intensive risk a little bit. Is that essentially high-risk nature of the crime itself and/or repeated, repeated offender? Is that how we define intensive, or are there other factors at play?
I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Lurs to answer this because he's the expert in this area.
So the intensive risk, it really is high-risk, high-need, is all that, that kind of speaks to, is high risk of reoffending. So, sorry, sorry about that.
Into the mic.
The intensive risk is the same as high-risk, high-need. So high risk of reoffending or committing more crimes, and high needs in that they need a lot of resources to address mental health and things like that. So those intensive risk caseloads are high-risk, high-needs that need a lot of work and case management.
Okay, thank you. And then, do we have an idea of our approximate recidivism rate in Arvada, in the courts?
No, because it's very hard to measure, especially when you throw in the OSS group. There's a very high recidivism rate in there. In part because part of their existence is inherently commits new crimes. If they don't have housing, they're going to commit trespassing. And so that's why it's so hard to measure. We could pull the statistics with our juvenile docket, probably a little bit easier. I'm going to talk about our case management software and the challenges we're having with data collection and statistic analysis in a little bit. But we could pull that. Just, the OSS group skews the numbers significantly.
That would be great. In fact, I would recommend having OSS separated out from the standard docket, simply because the nature of those two populations are so vastly different.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Causes of growth in probation, I've talked about this a little bit. Our school resource officers have told us they prefer filing cases into municipal court. Our defendants are requiring more supervision and a greater level of accountability. I believe in that, again, with my motto, own it, fix it, forget it. Own it is the biggest part of it, in my book, is taking responsibility for your actions. We have implemented greater efforts to screen individuals to make sure that we're determining risk levels and employing the appropriate levels of intervention. And we're really looking at rehabilitating individuals so not only are they getting to a better place in life, which I think I have a responsibility to attempt to do, but also that we're ensuring community safety. And our current population has some pretty significant supervision needs. Moving on to case statistics, when we look at the amount of cases that file per year, over the past couple of years, our case numbers have gone up. We did see a lull in 2020, 2021. People weren't going out as much, they weren't committing as much crime. People were kind of laying low, if you will. But over the past couple of years, our case numbers have certainly picked up. When we talk about case statistics by type, one thing that I'll tell you is this is, in part, connected to the number of officers we have in the city. When you have a reduction in the number of officers, you're inherently going to have a reduction in the number of tickets being filed. They're not going to focus on, or you don't have as many traffic officers patrolling the streets, so you're not going to get as many tickets. So that has had an impact in our numbers. However, aside from animal ordinance violations, which have kind of remained stable, the rest of our numbers have gone up pretty incrementally over the past couple of years. So when you look at this chart, it's 2022, 23, 24, and then the first quarter of 2025, just to give you a number of where we are so far this year. So our numbers with animal ordinance violations have relatively remained stable. And we do have a number of significant animal ordinance violations. And we see everything from dog-at-large, barking dog, to vicious dog, dog-animal, animal neglect, animal cruelty. We have recently, the city attorney's office did an incredible job revising our ordinance with respect to relinquishment hearings, to really streamline that process, and I'm so grateful for that. We had this really ugly hearing a couple of years ago where an individual from the footage animal shelter talked about the extreme mental health decline of animals who spent a long time in the footage animal shelter. And so we've really tried to make sure that animals who are there are either being released back to their owners in a very efficient period of time, or if necessary, can be disposed of. I hate using that word because it sounds really traumatic to dispose of an animal. What disposal means is, and that's their terminology, either that the animal can be adopted out or euthanized, depending on if the animal cannot be adopted out. So we have a relinquishment hearing generally within 10 days of that animal being impounded. And so a decision's being made, is that animal going to be released back to the owner? Or are they, am I going to hold that animal in impoundment? One of the concerns also about holding animals in impoundment is that the cost is very significant. And if you've got a couple of animals, that cost multiplies, and it can be shockingly expensive in a very short period of time. Mr. Marriott, you look like you had a question. Sorry, I was just looking. With, okay, with code enforcement violations, we have seen a massive increase in 2025. You know, our numbers were kind of stable, but just in first quarter of 2025, we already have 33 code violations. I had a quick email exchange with our Commander Barros and Deputy Chief Reeves today to say, like, what's going on? Why do we have so many cases? And they said it's really a shift in their philosophical approach. They used to wait for very extended periods of time to give people grace and time to abate and fix their properties. And they're really trying to rein that in a little bit and shorten the time period for which people have time to fix their properties before they get a ticket. So I think we're seeing a lot higher level of compliance requirements in a shorter period of time, hence why we're getting so many tickets. These tickets are very time-consuming because what we do when a person comes in, if they enter a plea of guilty on that code violation, we set them for regular review hearings to make sure that that property is getting back into compliance and staying in compliance. And those review hearings can be once a week, once a month, depending on the nature of the code violation. So they can, you know, 33 cases doesn't seem a lot, but that can wreck havoc on a docket when you have a number of code violations where you're having weekly, bi-weekly, monthly review hearings to ensure compliance. When we talk about traffic violations, again, our numbers have come up for the past couple of years. We're just seeing a lot of traffic violations in the city. If you ever want to know where our major accident spots are and where the major speed spots are, there's a high correlation between speeding and accidents. And, you know, we're seeing this. We do generally, most people have the ability to pay online for our low or level traffic violations, but some do require mandatory court appearance. If there's an accident, if it's a juvenile involved, or if it's reckless driving or speeding, 20 to 24, I'm sorry, 24 to 39 miles per hour over the posted speed limit, those are mandatory court appearances. This is where I tend to see a lot of people I know. A lot of my friends, my kids' friends, tend to pick up traffic violations. And you happen to see people you know on a regular basis.
So I recognize it's probably a rare case, but it absolutely must happen sometimes. So you say 24 to 39 is a mandatory court appearance for miles per hour over. What happens if they're 40 or more miles per hour over? Does that go up to the state or the county?
It comes here.
Okay.
It can go to the county, but I do see those cases on occasion. Oftentimes, it's either on Wadsworth or on I-70 is where you see that it's committed. It's pretty rare that I would see it on a smaller road. Maybe on Highway 93, right at that interchange of Highway 72, I see a lot of accidents at that intersection. But those are the two places where you see the majority of those. And it was interesting, anecdotally, we saw a number of those cases during COVID because the roads weren't as busy, and I think people felt more free to really book it. So.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, those are very problematic and concerning. Ordinance violations, again, we've seen an increase in the number of ordinance violations over the past couple of years. We're seeing anything from open container possession of drug paraphernalia to more significant assaults, criminal mischief, thefts, trespassing, et cetera. Our juvenile docket, our juvenile numbers have gone up pretty significantly over the past couple of years. It's interesting, the cases come in waves in terms of the type of cases that we see. I think a couple of years ago, we had a ton of fights in schools. And there was actually a period of time where there was a group of girls at Arvada West that continued to engage in fights. And it was the same group of girls that kept fighting and picking up multiple tickets. It just creates a lot of tickets in that, in that boat. Last year, I would say it was a lot of possession of marijuana in school. There's a shocking amount of marijuana in our schools these days. So it just kind of goes, comes in waves in terms of the type of tickets that we see. During the summer, we see a lot of trespassing at the reservoirs. You know, it's due to the nature of the time of the year. Our summer slows down because the kids are out of school, and hopefully, they're busy doing other things than committing crimes.
Let me ask a quick question there.
Sure. Sure.
Of all those juvenile violations, do the majority of them come from the schools or, you know, reported by the school or SRO in the school?
Yes.
And, you know, you see that trend as that's grown over the years, kind of steadily over the years. Is that because more and worse stuff is happening in school? Or is that schools are turning more to the municipal court to handle things that they used to handle in school? And, you know, obviously Brad and I are dinosaurs up here. We were from a different era, but when we got in a fight in school, nobody called the cops, you know, the school handled the fight with two kids in school. Today, it doesn't sound like that's the case. It sounds like now the police are involved in a lot more things. First of all, the first question is, is that true? Is that what's kind of happening with some of those cases?
I'm going to give a very lawyer answer. It depends.
Okay.
I would say a little bit of both. I, you know, like that one case with a younger girl who had a shocking amount of violations, the school had tried every single appropriate intervention short of charging her before they finally charged her because there was no other interventions that they could possibly employ short of giving her a ticket and sending her into the municipal court system. So that is an example of a school that tried everything else. And I do see a lot of that. The schools actually do a tremendous job in working with kids to have behavioral intervention short of issuing tickets. But there are certain circumstances where I've also seen cases where I'm like, wow, they really had zero tolerance here, where, you know, they issued a ticket, maybe they could have done something else. It's not for me to decide that. I also think the schools are facing a much higher rate of violence in the schools, which is why I think they're going to a level of zero tolerance. They have things that we never dealt with. I'll include myself in the dinosaur thing. They have school security threats on a regular basis. My kids are in high school, one's now in college, but the idea that they know what to do for an active shooter is shocking and sad. So they're facing levels of threats that we never dealt with back in the day. And I think that's why schools are developing a lessening of tolerance for violence committed in the schools. And I tell kids when they come into court and they have committed an act of violence in the school, we do have a zero tolerance policy for this. Everyone should feel safe in schools. Everyone has the right to feel safe in schools. And so my goal in sentencing, one is if you commit an act of violence in schools, that you go to a conflict management class or an anger management class because you need to learn that there's other ways of resolving conflict short of violence. We all have conflict, whoops, we all have conflict. Conflict is normal, but resolving conflict with violence is not a, it's not acceptable. That should be the norm. And secondly, I'll implement some community service work to make them think twice about committing an act of violence again. So that should be our foundation, and I firmly believe in that. And so I think it's all of it.
Well, maybe this is more comment than question. So I think, I mean, I have no doubt that our court is handling these things appropriately. The question for me is more, do all these things that are showing up in our court deserve to be in court? Is that, it's not that our court handles them wrong. I think our court is handling them right. But is it in everybody's best interest, particularly the taxpayers or our court system, for those things to be in court? Or would it be, sometimes would it be in our best interest for the schools to handle some of their, some of their own problems more like they, more like they did in the past? And if so, what's the right avenue to do that? Because obviously the court can't really do that. You know, you can't advocate for that type of an operational position. But is that something that we in the city should be, you know, at least having a conversation with the schools about or a community conversation around about, hey, look, maybe we should all get on the same page on this subject about where do we want these types of infractions ending up? Do we want them ending up in an administrative process through the school? Do we want them ending up in the juvenile court? Where's the line? And I think if we all agreed on the line, it might be better than, currently, right now, it sounds like the schools decide where the line is and we're just, you know, service providers of everything that's over that, over whatever they determine is over that side of the line.
What this reminds me of is a couple of years ago, and I appreciate your comment, I hear what you're saying, a couple of years ago, there was a bill pending in the legislature to raise the charging age of juveniles from 10 to 13 years old. So currently juveniles can be charged at age 10. There was a bill that would have raised that charging age. And there was a lot of discussion about do 10 to 12-year-olds belong in the juvenile justice system? You know, is it the school-to-prison pipeline? Are we harming kids more than helping them, et cetera? And when there was that discussion of moving, increase the charging age to 13, the school pushed back hard, as did social workers, caseworkers, human services, because they said, we are not equipped to take on these behavioral problems. That is what the juvenile justice system is for. We're not, we don't have the expertise to address criminogenic needs, high risks, high need children. Our job is to educate children. Our job is not to babysit them. Our job is not to change behavior, to address mental health concerns, address, you know, safety concerns. That's not our role. So I say that not to say I agree, disagree, what have you, but it was certainly a discussion at that time of who's responsible for this.
Well, it's kind of a, notwithstanding the age of the offender, but there's a spectrum from a very minor infraction to serious infractions. And I think you get to the ends of the spectrum and you say, well, there's no doubt that belongs in court. And there's also no doubt that that belongs in an administrative process within the school. But then you've got everything in between. And where's the line at which time they start, start ending up in court? And, you know, what's the right way for really the community to decide what that is? Because again, I don't think the court's in the right position to do that, although maybe you have some influence about saying, hey, look, these kinds of charges maybe shouldn't be here, or this behavior maybe shouldn't result in this charge or something. I don't know, I don't know where that is, but in my time here on council, I don't recall ever having these kinds of community discussions. But obviously, there's decisions being made somewhere. Some administration somewhere is deciding, when we see this, we're doing A, and when we see this, we're doing B. So that's being made, but yet the court, the municipal court becomes, you know, not the victim of that, that's the wrong word to use, but plays an unwitting role in that of ending up catching stuff that, I mean, maybe everything you see, you feel like the court should catch, maybe you see stuff that the court shouldn't catch, and maybe on the other side, the schools are handling stuff that should be in court. I mean, I think it can, it can go both ways. But how would the community best go about kind of trying to deal with that? Because if you look, if you take that juvenile chart and you project it forward five more years, I mean, the load, if that trend were to continue, the load in the municipal court of just juvenile charges is going to be, you know, you're going to need, you know, we're going to need to build you a new building and triple your staff to be able to handle it if that continues on that course. And so what are all the options there?
The other thing that I'll throw out is, again, the city attorney's office, are the prosecutors in this case, they always have the discretion, if they see a charge that says this is normal kid behavior that should have been dealt with in the school and maybe was addressed in the school, we're dismissing the case. So they always have that discretion to say, this doesn't belong in the municipal court. I don't, I can't dismiss the case. I don't have the jurisdiction to just outright dismiss cases, that's their jurisdiction. But they can do that. They have that authority. So there's another kind of stopgap measure, if you will, to prevent cases that should not be here from getting to the court.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Davis, you were next.
Thank you, and thank you Judge Kurtz and staff. You guys do a fabulous job. I've sat in court several times and I'm very impressed with what you are able to achieve, given your staffing. I too am a dinosaur at, and I think there is a city responsibility for public safety, especially in schools. Everybody should feel safe in school. I felt safe in school. I can tell you that my husband's 17-year-old granddaughter who goes to school in Boulder County does not feel safe in school. It used to be you'd go behind the bleachers and punch the crap out of one another and you resolved it and shook hands. Now people are bringing guns to the fistfight. So I can see where there is a need to de-escalate actions of those folks who decide that they want to be on the other end of the spectrum, or they want to act out in ways that are absolutely negative and antisocial. I think that that is really important. What I want to avoid in our, in our city is what happened at East High School. And I think that is a clear indication of the school saying, we can handle it, and they did not handle it. And it ended up in two adults being shot. And I can see where that is, that is where schools are saying, now this must go to the court, where SROs are saying, this is something that needs to go to the court. I also see parenting differences, and this is not disparaging parents at all, please don't take this. But I had a friend who was an engineer decided to go and be a chemistry teacher. And he taught AP chemistry. And he caught one of his students cheating and had to make sure he got to a phone before the student could get to the phone to call the parent, because it was always not my child. And so if there, if parents are enabling their children to get away with things, then am I going to take the next step? Absolutely. Am I going to take the next step after that because someone's going to bail me out? I think that that is, that's a problem. And I do hear from my teacher friends that they are not adjudicators, they are not police officers, they are there to teach. They don't want to handle weapons, they don't want to police their students. That's why we have SROs, correct? So I think that what was happening in '79, '80, '81 is vastly different than what's happening in '23, '24, and '25. So I can understand why your cases might be, might be increasing. And I've been to Arvada West High School where there were 2,000 kids changing classes and not all of them were nice to one another, as you would have in high school. But I can see where a teacher would stand back and be exceedingly intimidated by that number of children when it's a 1 to 40, 1 to 50 ratio. That scared me and I'm a full-grown adult. So I think that this level is, and if we have the support of the city attorney's office, if it's making it to your court, I'm sure that there have been things that that child has done, that young person has done to get them there. And adjudication is appropriate. So thank you for this.
The one thing I'll talk about, actually two quick things to comment onto that, I see a lot of enabling in my court. And I try and address that because it drives me bananas. And so if I hear that, I'll say, Mom, one of my first questions, Mom or Dad, what do you think about what happened here? Because I'm trying to gauge their level of holding their child responsible. They can say, my son didn't do anything wrong, you know, they were really the victim here. This was, you know, the administrators are overreacting, what have you. Or they could say, my son messed up. They did something wrong, we took accountability at home, and we're making sure we're addressing it at home and we're glad that we're here today. So I'm looking for that and trying to address the level of enabling or accountability. And when I see accountability, when I see taking responsibility, I celebrate that. Say, thank you. Thank you so much, because that is part of that owning it, for both the parent and the child. The other thing I'll tell you is, just talking about your experience and walking down the hallways, I can't remember if it was Arvada or Pomona, but we had a school administrator try to break up a fight and suffer a heart attack in the middle of it. So I understand administrators saying, I don't want to be involved in this. I want an officer involved to break this up. They're not there to get injured on the job. And these fights are pretty gruesome. Unfortunately, we have to watch the videos of these fights on occasion. Fights didn't occur in my high school. If they did, I didn't know about them. It just wasn't something that had happened where I grew up. But it is horrific, some of the stuff that I've witnessed. So to your point, I don't think our educators should be forced to separate them, to deal with it, to address it. I do think it's a criminal issue.
Councilmember Ambrose, you were next.
Thank you. I'll say that in my experience of schools, like both personally and my kids, I do feel that teachers and administrators care about their kids greatly and do try transformative justice or restorative justice, anti-bullying measures, raising expectations, and shaping the culture of the school to prevent this as much as possible. I also think, I wanted to ask you how much you think SROs are involved in these sort of things? And like you mentioned, the prosecutors can decide to be like, okay, bring this into the municipal court system because, obviously, but on the ground, you know, in the schools are SROs. So how much do you think that they are talking to the principal and to the administrators who are deciding on discipline policies? And the line between you can figure this out in the school or you got to take this to court?
From my experience, our SROs are deeply ingrained in the school culture. They have incredible working relationships with school professionals and school administrators, and I think they're working collaboratively together to make those decisions on a case-by-case basis. To talk about the culture shift, when you said that, it reminded me, I actually had a juvenile in court, and I told her, you know, I used to see fights all the time at Pomona, and I haven't seen one in a couple of years. And she said, we had a culture shift. She said, our administration and our SRO started the year setting the expectation for our culture, that we are not a violent community and we won't tolerate violence in our community. And I'm telling you, we used to see fights all the time in Pomona and it shifted. So I think that culture and that expectation setting is incredibly important, and the SROs are a vital, important part of that.
Yeah, every school that I've visited in my district has commended the SROs.
Yeah.
And that they're doing a wonderful job. And talking to these schools about their discipline policies because one of the jobs I've had is addressing the school-to-prison pipeline and making sure that, you know, if kids are in court, it's because they need to be in court and that is the appropriate action that needs to be taken.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you, actually. My comments have largely been addressed. My time on school board, we would hear about the violence happening in the schools. School safety and security was always top of mind quite often before any other issue. And the violence, the presence of weapons, it's just getting pushed down into younger school populations all the time. And I honestly, I think we saw a shift in parental engagement quite often, and whether or not the parents actually saw anything wrong with the behavior that had gone on. And so I'm happy to hear how you handle the parental accountability in the courtroom, but I'm wondering if you're seeing it changing over time?
We have a parental responsibility ordinance that we enacted a couple of years ago, then again, our city attorneys drafted, that if I don't see that accountability, that engagement, I can add them as a party to the case and order them to do things like parenting classes or community service work or things of that nature if I have that concern. There have been certain circumstances, I think I've only used that ordinance maybe about five times since the enactment of it, and it's when I see parents just completely having zero engagement, zero accountability, not bringing their kid to court, not showing up for treatment, not taking their kid to community service work, et cetera. So it's a really nice tool in our toolbox, but I use it very sparingly. I really try that voluntary engagement and accountability. I think that generally provides better outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay. One Small Step Court. Obviously, we restarted this. This was a program that existed prior to me coming to the city. It took a pause during COVID, because we took a pause on court during COVID. And we restarted it in the fall of 2021. It is a 12-month program consisting of four phases. These phases are small steps to work towards stability in housing. Some of the things in the small steps are show up for court, meet with our service providers, meet with our case managers, obtain your vital documents, like an identifying document, social security card, birth certificate, apply for social security. Some of our defendants are eligible for disability, social security, but have never applied for it. And it's a very cumbersome, difficult process, and so our case managers help them with that process. Work towards treatment, if appropriate, mental health treatment, substance use disorder treatment, and/or working towards employment. We work together as a multidisciplinary team. So our team members are myself, the probation officers, the core officers, the homeless resolution case managers, the city attorney's office, and our nonprofit and non-governmental organizations. We have incredible nonprofit organizations that support One Small Step. We had Family Tree come today, which was super exciting. It was their first time coming as an active partner, so I was thrilled to have them there. We have Safeside, C-3, Jefferson County Public Health, and Mile High Behavioral Health. We've had other nonprofits and non-governmental organizations come as well. And then we have just community groups who've come in and support our OSS defendants. I'm part of the Northwest Volunteer Friends Group up in Northwest Arvada that does service projects, and they put on a Thanksgiving lunch for our defendants last year. We have had groups, we had Ralston Valley Lacrosse provide grab bags for our defendants. So they packed, I think we got over 300 grab bags. So every defendant who comes in gets a little grab bag that has water, basic toiletries, snacks, what have you. So we just have community groups that support us as well, which has been really nice. We are a zero-budget program, so we don't have a budget for these things. So we try to rely on community partners as much as possible. Our current statistics, we have 105 people in the program, 36 active, 79 on warrant status, nine are currently housed, and 23 recently successfully completed. So we're seeing some really good turnarounds. I cannot stress enough, the addition of our homeless resolution case managers has been a massive contribution to the OSS docket. They have taken our case management and support of our defendants to much higher levels. Prior to that, it was all on Nick, and that was just an unexpected, you know, not a realistic expectation for him to do significant case management on 105 high-risk, high-need individuals.
Councilmember Ambrose.
So these are current statistics, current to first quarter of this year or 2024? Or what is meant by current?
I'd say currently in the program. So we currently have 105 people in the program, currently have 36 active participants, currently 79 in warrant status. From our current active group, nine have been housed and 23 recently successfully completed. I don't know when that number comes from, as of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a quick follow-up question? Successfully completed versus housed? So are successfully completed meaning they've done the things we wanted to do, but they're still homeless?
They could be, yes. Every person's different and we really tailor their expectations individually. So some, I had, a perfect example is one of my defendants is currently housed but not necessarily successfully completed, because we're still working on issues like employment, applying for disability benefits, substance use disorder treatment, et cetera. So some people might be housed but aren't done with the program yet. We also have some people who are successfully completed the program but not necessarily housed. And that could be because they're engaged in treatment, they're working towards employment, and they're on a housing application, but sometimes those wait lists are years. We're not going to keep them on the program just because there's no housing available. So it just, it really is dependent.
Mayor Proton Mormon?
You asked my question.
And then quickly, with our program at the suburban studios, how many folks within our One Small Step program are moving into that bridge housing to take advantage of that sort of extra layer of services to move into ultimately permanent housing? that sort of extra layer of services to move into ultimately permanent housing?
Thankfully, I've got both Mr. Janz, one of our homeless resolution case managers, and Mr. Lurs here who can answer that.
I believe currently on the One Small Step Court program. So Hudson and Alex do a lot more within the community, so they react or interact with a lot more of the people who are unhoused. But from the One Small Step, I believe we only have two right now that are in there. And then I have one on probation who was on OSS, didn't do well on OSS, went to traditional probation, and he's going into the suburban studios.
Wonderful. So it can actually be a referral part of One Small Step if folks are ready to get housed and get clean and do all the things, whatever they might need.
And it's a massive benefit to our defendants. And I can tell you an example. We have one defendant who was sober, who had done treatment, who had a job. She was actually working at the schoolhouse, but she didn't have housing. And so we tried to support her the best that we could to make sure she had proper clothes. My team got together clothes that she had appropriate clothes to wear to work. You know, we did everything that we could to support her, but it's unrealistic to expect her to show up for work every single day when she doesn't have a safe place to keep her belongings when she's at work, and she doesn't have a place to shower or sleep when she's not at work. And so she did eventually get fired. She's now in suburban studios and doing really well. I think she's close to employment, and she is signed up to take classes at Metro State this summer. So that's one of those things, like if you can just get them a safe place to sleep at night, the rest of the stuff can oftentimes fall in line. So it's such a gift. And I was checking with Mr. Janz, I think we currently have four OSS defendants at suburban suites.
Excellent. All right. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon next.
Yeah, I did have a follow-up to that. Thank you for sharing that. And maybe it's too soon to get information on this, but I would be curious on the work that our navigators are now doing. Is there a way to quantify the prevention of folks ending up in the court system because they're getting that assistance from our navigators? See what I'm asking?
I'm going to defer to them on that because if they're doing preventative efforts, I don't know about it.
Sure.
Right? Which is a good thing, and that's kind of what we want. And I'm going to defer to Mr. Janz.
I would say that we probably could do a before and after would probably be the most appropriate. It's like one client had, I mean, clients before had a ton of, like she's saying, on the streets, it's very, you're going to catch a lot of cases while you're out there, but when you're inside, you catch a lot less. So I think we do a before and after would probably be the most appropriate.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, with this line of questioning, it made me curious about people who have graduated the program but still are not housed because they're on a waiting list. And can you share with council, like, what a homeless person would have to do in order to not break any laws? Like, how can you legally be homeless? How can you be homeless and never trespass? How can you be homeless and never beg for money and break panhandling laws? How can you be homeless and work? How can you be homeless and be legal?
I don't think you can, and that's just my most honest answer. And I don't know if Mr. Lurs, and I've actually got one of our OSS participants here today. I didn't notice that she was here. If you want to come down, if it's okay with you, I'd love to have Ms. Garcia address. She is one of our success cases who's doing really well, but I think she can best address this issue.
Thanks. Absolutely.
Do you want to answer that question? Is it possible to be homeless?
It is very, very difficult. It almost feels like just existing.
Can you get closer to the microphone?
It is very difficult. It almost feels like we would have to be nonexistent in order for that, for it to be crime-free, honestly. It's, it is, it is difficult, but One Small Step is very helpful. I'm a graduate from the program, and I am housed as well now, and I am still part of the community. I've been doing a lot of free haircuts for everybody now for Easter and only residentially challenged individuals, so helping them with that and helping them with the things that they're doing with the court. So I was there almost a year with you guys, so it was a year long, and it was, it did help me get to where I am now, where it's, now that I can pay forward to the community and pay back what they've done for me. So in the church as well, the Arvada, the Rising, they've also helped out a lot. So it's almost like teamwork. It's over there and over here, and any help is a lot of help, and they have helped a lot, so.
Thank you for sharing your answers.
Can you share your name with us? Would you be willing to?
I'm Ms. Garcia. Are you okay to share your name?
Yes, Melanie Garcia, Mrs. S. I would like to share. My name's Melanie Garcia, and I would like to share my story as well. It's, I suppose, a difficult journey, but we're definitely well on our way to.
Thank you. Congratulations for all the hard work you've done. We're proud of you.
Some other success stories in addition to Ms. Garcia, who's amazing, and I'm so thrilled she's here tonight. And I'm using initials for purposes of anonymity. DG had been on the streets, I think, for about eight years. She started our program in July 2023. She had 15 cases, so she was one of those people, just by the nature of her existing on the street, she picked up a lot of trespassing cases. She went into treatment. She went, I think, first to detox, then to inpatient treatment, then to sober living. She graduated her program successfully and is doing really well. ZB was male. He actually has this fascinating background where he was a IT professional but suffered from significant mental health concerns. So he used to make over $100,000 a year but had significant mental health concerns that eventually led to a downward spiral, and he ended up on the street. He was couch surfing, living in his car. Since 2019, he came into our program in May 2024. We got him back on medication, back in mental health treatment, and he is employed, I believe, at Amazon right now, last I heard, and he graduated in 2025. So again, that's one of those things, it's just those little assistance that he needs to get back on his feet. BG started the program in May 2024, another very fascinating story. He was actually a practicing dentist up in Vail and happened to make a poor choice and receive a felony conviction, and that had devastating impacts on his life, and he ultimately ended up unhoused in Denver. At some point, he picked up a ticket in Arvada, and we were able to support him in getting employed. His first step was actually getting employed. He was still living on the streets, maintaining employment, which is tremendous, and he was able to save up enough money and work with our case managers to budget wisely to get back into housing, and he's now self-sustaining in housing. And then NG, I don't know how long she'd been on the streets. I mean, I'd say at least 10 years, if not longer, just an incredible length of time on the streets. Multiple cases, multiple jurisdictions, state, municipals, et cetera. She was approved for a housing voucher in December and moved into her apartment. Mr. Janz actually picked up a bunch of furniture and delivered it to her because unfortunately, with the housing voucher that she had, she had this big empty apartment with no furniture. So she was sleeping on a pile of clothes for weeks, and that really bothered me. So we, Mr. Janz and I talked, he got her furniture, and she, I just checked in with her today, she's doing amazing. She's still in our program because now we're working on community engagement. She's someone who cannot work a full-time job, but she can certainly needs to get out of her apartment. Just to give you an example of what this looks like, she said that the first month of her in the apartment was very uncomfortable for her because she hadn't been inside four walls in years, and it was very anxiety-producing and very stressful for her to have that. And of course, we all think, you've got it made, you're finally inside, you don't have to worry about your safety, but we don't take into consideration that this is actually incredibly stress-provoking. Those first several weeks or months in housing, and I think that's why a lot of our defendants bomb out of housing when they first get it, is it's just not what they're used to. Sometimes being on the streets is a lot easier for them. So those are some of the challenges that we've worked through. A couple other wins. One of our participants worked with case managers and got an Colorado ID for the first time in six years. One of our participants is working with case managers, she was the one who I was talking about who's working at the schoolhouse, she lost the job. She's in suburban suites, am I saying that, suburban studios? And she's registered for school and working on employment. One of our participants is 64, qualifies for social security disability but never did the application because he didn't know how to. He now has that and can pay for his own housing now, now that he's got that taken care of. And then finally, one of our most recent participants, who I think he had 40-plus cases, and just, I mean, he was one of those who transferred from OSS to probation supervision because he was so high-risk, high-need, he could not stop picking up cases. And he's currently in a short-term residential treatment and eventually plans to move in. I think we're trying to figure out, is he going to go to suburban studios or will he go into sober living? That's still up in the air, depending on how he transitions out of his current treatment facility. But those big things, identifying documents, school unemployment, social security benefits and treatment, are all things that we're working on on a regular basis. No trespass orders. So inherently, with our OSS cases and other criminal violations coming into the municipal court, we see a lot of no trespass orders. These are allowed, and I know we talked about this briefly last week, but a law enforcement officer can issue a no trespass order if someone commits a criminal offense and has probable cause to believe a criminal offense has occurred on city property. That no trespass order will prohibit that individual from entering or remaining upon that city property for a year from the issuance of the no trespass order. When they get the no trespass order, they have a right to a hearing. If they fail to show up for that hearing, it automatically gets entered. If they show up for the hearing and request a contested hearing, we will then set it for hearing, and then the city attorney would put on evidence to show why this should be in place. So we have, since 2024, we had 191 no trespass orders issued. In 2025, we had 41 trespass, no trespass orders issued so far this year. 93 of those total 232 no trespass orders are in the Old Town Entertainment District, and 16 of the no trespass orders in total have modifications. So this, an example of this is, when an individual comes in and says, I understand, I cannot go to the Old Town Entertainment District, however, I get all my services from the Rising. That's where I shower, that's where I get food, that's where I meet with a dentist, that's where I get mental health care because JCMH has a kiosk there. Can I get a modification to the no trespass order that allows me to go to the Rising from 9:00 to 11:00, you know, Monday through Friday? And so what we will do when those requests come in is I notify Mr. Lurs. He will often talk with our core officers and our city attorneys to get their position. They often reach out to the Rising, the library, other affected impacted individuals. They'll get their input, and oftentimes, when we get to the hearing, there's an agreement. Yes, we will modify it with these provisions. So those 16 no trespass orders that have modifications are usually upon agreement of all those parties. And I know we talked about the statistics in terms of how many total, I was wrong, I said 5%, and it was a guess, it's 7%. So I was kind of close. Our most trespass.
Let me, I'm sorry. Let me just ask you a follow-up on that real quick. So you've, you know, we've given modifications to some of them. Have we rescinded any of those modifications for any of them?
We have. So we have had people who have violated the modification request. An example of that is, let's say an individual is allowed to go, the modification allows them to go to Old Town for purposes of receiving services at the Rising from 9:00 to 11:00, and they're found in the Old Town Square at 1:00 PM. That's a violation. They'll pick up a new charge, and we'll rescind that modification.
Okay. And how often has that happened, then? I mean, it's obviously a small number because there's only been 17, 16 modifications, but...
It's a pretty small number. I don't know offhand, probably about four or five.
But that exists to be used for, you know, because that's kind of, kind of part of the give and take there, right? They get trespassed from the area, but then they get the ability to come back to the area. At some point, if they violate the rules, they should be removed from the area again. I mean, they should have something at risk for doing that, so.
Absolutely. A good example, though, of those modifications, we have a defendant who, I mean, chronically homeless, I can't, I have no idea how long this individual's been homeless, and for ye, I mean, he's been in our program, I think, since the start in 2021, and tons of cases, just looks, he appeared hopeless. And he did have, he came in, he got some no trespass orders, he requested modifications, and he was actually very appropriate in his request. He said, you know, I use the computers at the library, can I have two hours a day to use the computers at the library for job searches? I'm like, that's fair, that's reasonable. We checked with the library first, make sure it wasn't a location that he had been trusted upon. He came in and he requested a further modification. Can I go to the Rising at night when they have severe weather shelter? I have nowhere else to go. That seemed like a reasonable request. More recently, he asked for one day to go to the Rising because the DMV2Go is going to be there, and he wanted to get his ID. Again, I modified it so that he could go on that date between 9:00 and 11:00 to utilize the DMV2Go to get his ID. This man, who had seemed hopeless since 2021, is now actively in the process of finishing the application to go to Fort Lyons, which is a dual treatment facility for mental health and substance use disorder. I have to be honest, I had zero hope that he would ever get there, and the fact that he's getting there is a miracle. But I think that those little, not gifts, but those little, showing him a little trust and a little hope and that we're willing to work with him, I think has gone a long way to saying, we'll work with you, you work with us, and let's get you to a better place in life. Again, our top trespass locations, Old Town Entertainment District is one of our top trespass locations, McAvoy Park and the RTD parking garage. Court revenue, I'm just going to touch on this briefly. You know, there's a very long history, and I think we're all aware, that we cannot be a revenue-generating source for the city. That can never be in my consideration. I'm legally precluded from considering the income of revenue when I'm imposing fines and costs. So this is just a touch point in terms of what it looks like for you, and I think it just mirrors the increase in case numbers. With the increase in case numbers, so does our increase in revenue. The one thing I'll tell you is that we have not modified our fines and fees or costs in I don't know how long. So that's something that we may want to take into consideration. I'm working with other judges to find some data to figure out what do other cities' fine schedules look like. No one has that data compiled, so we, as a group, are working together through the Color Municipal Judges Association to get that data compiled to see, are we in the right place? Are we on the right level? Are we too high? Are we too low? Are we, you know, in the average? So that's something that we're looking at. Parking citations. Again, this is a brief history and explanation of where we are today. In 2016, all parking tickets came to the court. Every single one, whether it happened in Old Town or whether it happened in another place in the city, every single ticket came to the court. So if you were to look at our cases historically, you'd see that prior to 2016, our case numbers are much higher, but it's in large part because we handled all the city's parking tickets. In 2016, we added LAS and an administrative process. So in 2016, moving on forward, if you got a ticket in Old Town, that was handled by LAS, and it's handled administratively. It went through a couple different offices in the city. I think at one point, City Manager's Office handled those. Currently, infrastructure handles those tickets. If you get a ticket outside of the city or outside of Old Town, those tickets are handled through the municipal court. So tickets are handled, being handled differently, whether it's in Old Town or outside of Old Town. That has created issues because one's an administrative process and one's a court process. And what we've learned over time is they're being handled differently. Most of the administrative tickets handled through infrastructure are being dismissed, whereas I don't readily dismiss cases in court, and that's part of my accountability piece. So we're handling them philosophically very different, and our fines are different. That's a problem. And so we, in 2022, 2023, started saying, this is a real problem. There's an equity problem here. We need to make sure that our processes are aligned, whether that means that we decide administratively and court that we're going to handle them the same, that our fine schedules are going to be the same, or if we create a unified process. So we've been meeting since 2023, infrastructure, city attorneys, courts, and PD, to say, how do we want this to look, ensuring that everyone, regardless of where you get your ticket in the city, is handled similarly. We have some ideas, those ideas are not finalized. So this is an introduction to the topic. I believe Ms. Rose introduced the topic as well in the weekly memo on Friday. So this, again, there's nothing finalized here. Just an idea of our parking violations, since 2018, you know, we had a lot more in 2018, the numbers went down. I don't think people were committing parking violations or officers weren't ticketing people for parking violations 2020, 2021, and our numbers have slowly started to increase. This is a, one proposal out of many, so please don't take this as this is where we're going. This is currently a proposal, but it's the creation of a hybrid process whereby these tickets are handled in a unified process. So whether you receive a ticket in, outside of the, outside of Old Town or within Old Town, they are all put through the same system, where someone can pay online. If they don't want to pay online, they go, they can appeal their case to someone within the infrastructure system. If they don't like that answer, then they come into court. So they have the due process rights of a court hearing, but they are still handled kind of in a quasi-judicial, quasi-administrative process. This is one recommendation that we're looking at, but it shows you that kind of unification to make sure that there's not inequities within our system. More to come on this in the future. I know some of you had asked about failures to appear and failures to comply. I'm touching on this really briefly because there's two bills pending in the legislature about failures to appear. So I just wanted to give you some background about what it looks like in the city. Right now, in 2024, we issued almost 3,000 warrants. Right now, in 2024, we issued almost 3,000 warrants. 2,000 of those were failures to appear and about 730 were failures to comply. The difference is, a failure to appear warrant is someone failed to appear for court. A failure to comply warrant is that they were ordered to do something by the court as a condition of the sentence, and they failed to comply with their sentence. So I can issue warrant for that failure to comply. So as you can imagine, you know, in 2021, we were only doing about 1,600, and our numbers almost doubled now. This is a massive increase in the workload that my staff has shouldered over the past couple of years. And a lot of this is those repeat failures to appear, which is what some of the bills are attempting to address. My understanding sadly is that that CML-initiated legislation, which I believe was 25, 1276, I might have that number wrong, but I'm going to address it in a minute, I think that failed today. So unfortunately, the attempt to address it isn't going to pass this year. That's my guess. Nothing's been finalized, but I think that's the writing on the wall. Paperless court, this is one of the wins that our court has done an amazing job on. On the left, you see our old process. Anytime I need to handle anything in court, my staff would put a piece of paper in the file. They'd have a file box, they'd bring the files to me, and I'd process the paperwork, and then I'd send the files back to them. So it's a lot of file shuffling back and forth between me and my team. This leads often to missing files and a lot of wasted time looking for files. On the right is our newer process, and this is what our paperless process is. Every single process that we do, whether it is amending a charge, or expunging a juvenile's case, or sealing a case, or dismissing a case, or issuing a warrant, every single one of those is now a bucket that I can do in my work queues. So a work queue is created and a file sent to me electronically, it goes into my work queue. I can do the work in the electronic file, and then I can send it electronically back to my court. It's a beautiful process. So it's, it's really awesome. Ms. Cook, that is the majority of what she's been doing over the past year. It's a ridiculous amount of work. She's not an IT specialist, but she's become one over the past year. I can tell you, our full court system is not very helpful, and so she has really taken on this challenge of creating this process for us. We still have some buckets, if you will, that need to be finished. We expect it to be done by the end of this year. I'll be really excited, I'm really excited to get rid of the paper. So the upside is we're getting paperless. The downside is, for me personally, our relief judges, again, we only have two, they're not trained in this process, so I do all the paperwork, which is why this is what I do on the weekends, is I go through all our warrants, all our expungements, our ceilings, our motions to amends. That's what I do on the weekend to make sure that we're staying on top of the paperwork. We will get them trained, we just need them to have enough time to come in and get the training so that they can do it as well. This allows for electronic filing of documents, reviewable audit trail, collaboration, streamlined process, et cetera. So, and this should give us a better ability to do data management collection and statistical analysis. So those things are coming. The drawbacks. Full court is our current case management software, and it's very outdated. It's a 1990s system. It really has not been updated since then. If you saw the picture of what it looks like on the right, it looks kind of like one of those DOS-based systems, you know, you, you tab over and what have you. It requires significant training, they have high fees. Anytime we call them to say, hey, we need to do this upgrade, we now want to create this work queue, there's a fee associated with it. They have very little of any customer support. So there are much better case management software systems out there that we're looking at into. What we need, though, is eventually we're going to need IT support to transition to a new case management software, which means that we need to get through workday first. The IT department's really focused on workday, we support that, we want to support that, but eventually this is something we're going to need to address. Court facilities, we are at a space. As you've seen, our team has grown a little bit over the past couple of years, and we're currently at a place where our probation officer is housed outside of our department. We don't have an office for relief judges, and we're, we're at max capacity. If you come during any docket day, like a busy Tuesday morning or our OSS docket, there's people everywhere, if you've seen, and we've got concerns about that. So one of the things that we're looking at is, is it feasible for us to stay in the space in the long term with our increasing docket numbers, or do we need to find another space eventually? I know there's been discussions in the past about this. I'm putting it on your radar. I know that we're doing the facilities master plan review, that there's a process by which we're doing that, and it's something that I'd like considered as part of that facilities master plan review. I think there's a lot of exciting options out there where we could eventually transition to with a bigger space that would allow for an actual probation department. Our probation department shouldn't be housed inside the court offices. Any normal court facility has probation separate. We just don't have the space to put them. Our jury meets in a conference room that we have to reserve if we can reserve a room. That's not ideal. So these are things that we're looking for in the long term. And there's benefits to more space, better customer service, safer work environment, and increased efficiency. Recent updates, though, with our facilities is we have upgraded our sound system. We are a court of record, and we're legally required to record every single proceeding within our courtroom, but our proceeding, our system was so outdated that it was regularly breaking down, and our IT department said, you got to fix this immediately. Thankfully, we had money in the budget, we upgraded our sound system, and we also added an additional TV. If you've ever sat in the courtroom, it's very awkward, especially if you're sitting in a jury box, the TV's up and to their left, and so they kind of have to turn and watch videos like this for extended periods of time. It's just an awkward setup, we're trying to solve for it. Pending legislation, important things for you to be aware of. House Bill 251112, you know, the local authorities' ability to enforce vehicle registration, I believe Rep. Toney, one of our local representatives, is one of the sponsors of this bill. This will allow us to handle municipal, or rather, motor vehicle registration violations. This will increase our case numbers if, if this is passed. You know, that's just a natural, I'm losing my words. That's, it's what's going to happen if this passes. House Bill 251147, fairness and transparency municipal court. There's three parts to this. Part one is clarifying when court-appointed counsel should be appointed. We already comply with that, so that's not a concern of mine. We're already in compliance with what that law would require. It requires live streaming court proceedings. I know we talked about this at the strategic retreat. This is something that we're already looking at, getting the technology to make sure that we're in compliance with this if and when it passes. I think this is going to pass. It's, it's sailing through. The third part of it is my biggest concern, and I actually testified against this third part of this, and then this requires that our sentencing be constricted to state sentencing laws. So a perfect example of this is right now, our trespassing, if someone commits an act of trespassing, maximum fines 200, $2,650 and up to 364 days in jail. The maximum sentence in the state is 10 days in jail. So pretty disparate sentencing options between state and local. And every municipality is different, they have their own ordinances. The issue is, this specific issue is currently at the Colorado Supreme Court on a Rule 21. And so our first position is, the Colorado Supreme Court should decide this, not the legislature. They're the best situated to decide this. Second concern is, it's a complete eradication of home rule. We should be able to enforce and legislate our laws. Local issues should be handled locally. And the third issue is, there are certain offenses that we have a much more vested interest in addressing than state courts do. So I'm really opposed to this, I think it's going to pass anyway, and we're working with city attorneys, they're in the process of revising Chapter 62 of our municipal ordinances. We're taking a pause on that revision to see what happens with this, because either the Supreme Court is going to tell us that we need to do this or not, or the legislator's going to tell us that we're going to do this. But again, my biggest issue, and Kevin Bommer just did a beautiful article in, I can find a few, he did an op-ed article in some local newspaper explaining why this is so bad. And I'm happy to share that with you. He, he just said it much better than I am stumbling along tonight at almost eight o'clock.
Okay. Yes, please do share that. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yes, I had a question that was a few slides ago, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I heard you say that with the paperless system, that you'll be able to perform a much better statistical analysis, including recidivism. I assume including some recidivism, right?
If, I, I would say in full court, no. If we have a better software, yes.
Okay.
Full court, it's just the way that they pull reports, it's, it's very clunky, it's not accurate, it's very frustrating. We're actually working with the court, the IT data management team, to see if we can get better, better data and analysis. So that's a work in progress, but the way full court pulls data and numbers doesn't make sense.
Okay. And so how are you planning on getting the information about recidivism? And are there other facts about how, because I don't think recidivism is the only way that a court, a municipal court system should be evaluated, certainly all the other information you've presented here, but I'm interested in what other statistical analysis would be possible.
That's something that I'd have to discuss with my management team in terms of, in addition to data and statistics. One, how could we pull that from full court in a way that it makes sense? And then secondly, what is other information that we could provide that is as important as that, those raw statistics?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that's something I'd have to get back to you on. Okay. Other legislation, House Bill 251276, this is, was CML's initiated legislation in an attempt to address repeated FTAs. It would allow a court to hold the defendant on a casualty bond if there's repeated FTAs, failures to appear. And my understanding, the, the emails that I was getting this morning is that Rep. Soper was going to pull the bill. Apparently, late this afternoon, he didn't, but there's amendments happening that are probably going to kill the bill, so, and, and I don't think they have the votes to get it passed. So I think this is going to die. And then finally, Senate Bill 2562, failures to appear charges in municipal court. This arose, if you read the Denver Post this past year, there was a lot of focus on municipal courts. This bill arose out of a situation happening in the public municipal court where that judge was adding a charge of contempt for people who failed to appear for court, and what that was doing was making people jailable who otherwise wouldn't have been jailable. Most judges would never do that. And so this was, it's an example of legislating to the, the one, you know, when the general group did not do this. I support this, I think it's appropriate, we shouldn't be doing this, so.
I have one clarification. I know we had a concern on 1147 regarding, regarding the live streaming and if that would require us to, to livestream juvenile cases and minors. Do we know if there's been cleanup amendments on that part of the legislation?
Not at this point.
Talking to our legislators, please, please do something there with the legislation to ensure that we can protect the identities of minors when it is appropriate.
Yeah, my concern with that is, I believe, and I could be wrong, but the last version of the bill that I saw was that you would have to make an individualized finding on each specific case about why live streaming would be not in the best interest of the juvenile, rather than just saying a blanket, we're not going to livestream juvenile cases. And that just becomes ridiculously burdensome, so. Looking towards the future, we really want to have our budget goals support the growth of our probation department and make our temporary second deputy court administrator position permanent. We want to continue with consistent reporting out to the community. We are working on restructuring the one small step phase process. Part of that is that we've had a lot of lessons learned over the past four years since we've been doing that court about what's really worked for our defendants, what are appropriate expectations and what is not. And so we want to fine tune those phases to make sure our expectations align with success. We are working towards live streaming court process and figuring out the, the details of what that would look like and how we could do that in a way that increases transparency, but also protecting individuals who come into our court. We're looking eventually for a larger space for our court with the facilities master plan. We will be completing the paperless court process with our current case management software. We're contemplating having a rover position, if you will, to cover our extended leave absences. As I talked about earlier, we currently have three people on extended leave intermittently, which means on any given day, we could have, we could be short three staff members, and this has really created a burden on my team. It is really hard to manage, and it's really hard to backfill those positions, especially when some of those individuals have appointments that day that cannot be covered by other people. And so this is something that we're trying to figure out, how can we backfill them while continuing to support our team members who are on that extended care leave? It's really important to balance that without dropping the ball on the work that we need to get done. Our work cannot be pushed off and done at a later date, we have to run a court five days a week. There are not things that can be done on a later date, there are certain things that have to be done every single day. And so, a, a perfect example of this is one of our team members who is currently on extended care leave is, is responsible for preparing the jail video docket that happens at 8:30 in the morning. We are required to get paperwork to court-appointed counsel by 8:00 AM, at the very latest. If that person calls in, we have to scramble prior to 8:00 AM to figure out who's going to cover that. And oftentimes, it's a good 45 minutes to an hour's worth of work to prepare that. And it, it just becomes really untenable for the rest of our team to constantly be covering for that while doing your own jobs. It's, it's really burdensome and it's leading to a lot of burnout within my team. I, I'm going to ask you to reconsider the judge residency requirement. I know that memo's there, I'm happy to set up a, a separate meeting to discuss that further. We have a timeline on that because I'd love, if, if possible, I'd love to get that on the ballot, which means we've got very specific deadlines that we need to address in the very near future. And then finally, long-term, we're looking at a new case management system that really brings us out of the 1990s and into the 2020s to bring our software up to date.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you for your presentation. Really thorough, comprehensive, and really illuminating, I really appreciate it. This question of having enough staff, and you showed other municipalities and their population sizes and how much coverage they have, do you also know how they fund those positions? Like, is it totally out of the fines and fees out of the municipal court system, or is it general operating budget that contributes to it? Or do you know how they can sustain such a large staff for their court?
I'm looking to see if Mr. Archer's here, because he's the expert on that.
Oh.
He's not.
Okay.
But I, I might defer to my, some of my other teams. I believe everything that we do comes out of the general fund.
General fund, okay.
Our revenue cannot pay for our expenses, so our revenue goes into the general fund, and then everything that we request comes out of budget requests. So it's totally independent.
Okay. And that, probably that's how, because it's a law, that's how all the other municipalities are set up, too. They just have larger funds set out of the general operating budget to be able to support the staff size they need.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
All right, is this your last one?
I'm done.
That was a long 45 minutes.
I'm sorry, that was the longest 45 minutes. I will never do a time premise again. I apologize.
No, never do that.
I think it's largely our fault.
I have only one question I did not hear. There's been talk about in the past domestic violence coming into our court system. We feel like, just like you said around the juveniles, there was a thought process that we, as a local court, municipal court, would do a better service to our residents if these were summoned into our municipal court system. So what are your thoughts and where are you at with that, if, if anything?
I support it. I've worked in cities that do handle domestic violence cases, so I, prior to coming here, I was a relief judge in Lakewood, and they do handle domestic violence cases there. I think there's only about five or, I think it's five to eight, I can't remember which cities do right now, but I believe between five and eight cities do handle domestic violence cases in the state. And there are larger cities, Westminster, Aurora, Lakewood, and then there's a couple others there as well. It would certainly require an increase in staff because we'd have an increase in case numbers, but for those low-level domestic violence offenses, I do think it's appropriate. Again, it is easier on the officers, it's easier on the victims, it's easier on the defendants, because those issues are handled locally, it's easier to get here than to go up to Jefferson County Court. And it's one of those situations that I talked about in my very first slide, our most serious cases are state court's least serious cases. And so we have a better ability to really focus our attention to make sure that the appropriate interventions are employed. Where in state court, I've been a state court prosecutor, I know what it looks like when you've got that very low-level DV, you're not going to take that as seriously because you're triaging your very heavy docket and making sure that the, the very heavy cases are addressed appropriately. But that, I, I think truly that is a decision that council and the police department all need to be on board of.
Well, I think it, it, I think it, we have to do a lot of planning around that, let's just say, because, I mean, for that to come onto your docket would be, it gets into the space, the FTEs, the number of judges, the residency of the judges, it's a domino effect.
Right.
So, obviously, I wouldn't advocate at this juncture to expand that just yet, but, you know, when we get the other things loosened up, like the residency and a facility that you can grow into, then those discussions probably could be expanded. But, I still want to keep it on the radar, I think there's value in that. Just like you said in the juvenile, I just think that there is, you know, what we heard or what I heard, that I recall is, you know, our DVs would go into the county and they were not, they were treated like nothing, because, like you said, our highest is their lowest, even at the county level, and they didn't give it the service I think we would expect for our citizens. Right, wrong, or indifferent, I think we would have treated them a lot. I don't know what better means, but you know what I mean, we'd give them the attention we would expect. So, I would advocate that that stays on your radar. So, I don't know what kind of planning document, you know, your one to five-year planning, because some of this should be a one to five-year plan, but you maybe want to memorialize that, so if staff changes or we change, we don't just yank the will on you.
Sure. We do, and just to reflect upon that, we do meet as a management team twice a year to do that long-range planning.
Okay.
So a lot of our looking towards the future comes from that long-range planning, and we can add it.
Okay, absolutely. Just to keep it on the radar.
Sure.
You know, you answered my question about capacity for cases, I think that was my concern. We don't want to, we don't want to rush it, but we also don't want to have a lot of judges just sitting around and spending money that we don't need to be spending. We just need to find that right level, and I look to you to continue to do that. The residency requirement, I'm just going to come out and say, yeah, let's put that on the ballot, that's my vote, I'm sure the rest of the council will need to talk, but we definitely need to get it out on the, our deadline's what, August, to get it on?
Correct.
Yeah. You know, and I think council needs to kind of talk about some of the other charter things that never seem to pass, like you have to, you can't work for another city, you know. I think that, I think there is a, some constitutional issues with that, if I remember right, but I know there was some issues around that.
That's concerning. It hasn't passed the last couple times we put it on the ballot, but I think there were some ideas last time about how we might be able to phrase it. There are definitely, and council probably, those of you who are on council at this point, probably remember from 2021, when we did our charter review committee, there were a number of issues that the charter review committee recommended to go on the ballot, and council wanted to put some things on the ballot eventually, but didn't want to overload voters with too many issues. So, the judge residency requirement was one of those issues that council had considered and preliminarily green-lighted for the ballot, but for a later year. So, that was one of those issues, and there are a few others like that.
But maybe we talk about that, because maybe it's only this one, and that's the only battle we want to pick up.
Perhaps, maybe the team, I look to you, if we want to do a study session to potentially discuss some of these upcoming ballot issues in which we want to refer to the ballot.
Sure, we could absolutely do that. We have all the materials from the 2021 Charter Review Committee, so we can just pull those back up and let you know which ones went on the ballot in 2021, and from that remaining list that council had approved at that time, just ask what council might want to put on the ballot. I will say though, and I think Judge Kurtz has pointed this out, anytime you put something on the ballot and you want it to pass, there needs to be a major communication effort to allow voters, to really educate voters on what the issue is and what council's intent is behind it. So if you really want to do a push on something and you feel like there's a lot of education around it that needs to happen, we may be at a point where we're too late to start the process. Judge Kurtz has kind of started that process and understands what the education needs to be for the judge measure, but we may be too late for a 2025 ballot measure for other things. Doesn't mean we can't talk about it, happy to bring it forward, but I just wanted to raise that issue now so that council's thinking about it.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Yeah, thank you, that's fair. And the last thing I would, you know, we've been talking about successful programs that help our homeless. I've advocated for, on two of them, one is your small step, and I appreciate you looking at revamping it to make it more successful. And then also, I think the Section 8 housing voucher program, where we have a list, I think those two are tools that are tried and true efforts that seem to move the needle. But what I would ask is that somehow, some way, we bring your one small step as part of our homeless strategy plans, you know, and be part of that discussion. And what I would think is, you said some key things, you have no budget with this. I think if we put it in a strategic plan with the homeless strategic plan, that maybe the funding can be identified to elevate the one small step to what you need to success. You've done a fantastic job with your partners, your nonprofits, the lacrosse team, all of those little things mean huge leaps and bounds for these individuals. But we can't keep riding the backs of those volunteers and those donations to expect to keep moving this needle as it grows. So, I think it would be important that somehow, some way, the courts are tied into that strategic plan and elevates what's working today a little bit, as long with Carrie Espinoza's programs, to be, you know, we shouldn't abandon those efforts, we should elevate those ones that have been successful and figure out a way to institutionalize them while keeping, or maybe identifying funding to elevate that program. So I just wanted to stress that over and over and over, and I think the key to those programs is making sure they're part of a certain plan. Otherwise, it's, it could look at like somebody's pet project, and that's not what we want. I think we want further success in that, in what you're doing. So, great job, Judge, you're fantastic. We should do this every year, I don't think we'd get it every year, but I think it's important, you're one of three of our appointees, it's great to celebrate your team and get to know a face, name, next year you can rotate them through like the rest of the staff does.
Right. We talked about that.
Yeah.
I thought about it this weekend, and I'm like, they'll kill me if, I'm like, hey, you want to do part of the presentation? I thought that would be not well-received, but next year they know they're doing it.
Well, we might hit 45 minutes next year.
Yes, I know.
Ah, no, just kidding, I'm just kidding, Judge. But, great job, and thanks for meeting all the team here. And, you know, probation was an effort that was kickstarted a few times, and I think it went up and down, and I'm glad it's on its feet, I think we have a great team there now, and I think you're finally hitting on the cylinders we were expecting that probation program would do when we first went down this road. So, kudos to you and your team for making your program very successful.
I note with respect to probation, they really developed it. They came in as experts, none of us who had been here were probation officers, so we kind of said, "You create this, we'll support you, we'll give you the resources, but you create it." And so Mr. Lurs and Ms. Pine really did all the heavy lifting, and they've done an incredible job.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tim Mooreman.
Thank you, I just echo some of the comments of my fellow council members, really appreciate the presentation, it's very informative, and I agree that we need to do this on a regular basis, so, thank you for doing that and putting it together tonight, and thank you to you and your team and all the amazing work you're doing, I think it's a great service to our community. And, you know, the probation work, it sounds like that's relatively new, and I appreciate learning about that, and the successes there, as well as working with our juveniles in one small step. So, thank you again for all that amazing work.
Thank you. As I said, it's our first annual municipal court check-in.
And I'm sorry, I do agree that we should consider the judge residency requirement, modifying that, so I support that, thank you.
Thank you. I support what my fellow council members have said, and are there any other council comments direction? Otherwise, we'll look to the team for a study session on ballot initiatives, particularly looking back at what the charter committee referenced for us back in 2020. And with that, Mr. Wick, do you have any updates for us?
Well, thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have tonight is, next week at the business meeting, you do have a workshop on land development code revisions. Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
No, the only thing for me is, I think this is an incredible thing to have appointees do, I thought, I learned a whole lot from Judge Kurtz's presentation. If you ever want to see something like this for the city attorney's office, I am happy to do it.
I would love that.
Yes.
Yes, resounding yeses. And, the last thing I'll note to the public, this coming Thursday evening from 4:00 to 6:00 here at Arvada City Hall, we will have a meet and greet for our city manager finalists, I hope you will come out and get to meet everybody, provide counsel your feedback that evening. And with that, folks, we are adjourned.